All right, whoa.
Welcome to the August 22nd meeting of the Pushter Schools for Supportive Education. I'll call this meeting to order at approximately 6:30 PM. If you could mute your cell phones so that we don't have interruptions during the meeting, which I will also do right now, we can move right along. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, which is, does any board member wish to make any changes to this agenda that we have before us? Seeing none, we will go on to our third item. I guess the first item is the call to order. The third item, which is the superintendent report, and we will welcome Brian Kingsley to make remarks to the board and the community.
Thank you, President Pedersen. Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be with all of you tonight. Happy new school year. Really, really excited to illuminate all the incredible things that are happening across PSD to start the school year. So prior to my remarks, I'd like to actually show you incredible video that the PSD communications team put together to highlight what's been happening around our schools and our district over the last few days. Not only, oh, sorry. Not only is our communications team rock stars for putting something together like that, but I think you see firsthand that there was a lot of connection, a lot of joy, a lot of enthusiasm. And as I've had an opportunity to visit many of our schools over the first couple of days of school, people genuinely missed each other and are truly enjoying being back in community with each other. And that's not by accident, that's by design. I want to thank all of the PSD staff members who have been working since last year to make sure that we were first day ready. Something that the community might not know, that our operations team has been working around the clock to not just feed 1.2 million additional meals this year with universal meal programs that has been approved at the state level, but we had 22 of our 54 schools were under construction over the course of the summer. And for all of those projects to be moving forward expeditiously to ensure that schools were ready, that classrooms were ready, and people were able to experience joy, I want to thank the operations team. And that's all of the various arms of the operations team. It's a pretty big division, as you know. I also want to thank, you know, it's not just dedicated employees, it's people who are committed in these ranks to becoming lifelong learners, not becoming, they are lifelong learners. And the entire district has participated in learning activities to make sure that we're not just creating readiness, but we're also sharpening iron. We're, you know, trying to figure out ways to be better educators, better leaders, better servants of our community. And so the commitment that I saw at Rocky Mountain High School and other places to really provide a first-class professional development experience for teachers, for principals, prepare professionals, I'm just really very impressed on not just the delivery of those particular options, but how people were showing up and really truly engaging and wanting to better themselves as a person and as a professional. I have great news that center on this gratitude is our schools are taking learning and putting it into practice. We have many of our schools that are continuing to be recognized at a national level. I got a phone call yesterday morning from Ann Alfonso, the proud principal at Bethke Elementary School, to let me know that her school, Bethke, as a result of their hard-working teachers and dedicated staff, because of the time, energy, and commitment that they put together to meeting in professional learning communities, which are high-impact teams, to help move the work forward specific to what students need, not just what we think that we need to teach, they are now considered a model PLC work school across the country by Solution Tree. PSD, out of all of the schools that have received that designation nationwide, I want you to know the significance of this. There are only 553 schools across America that have received that designation, and three of them are in PSD. It's not just Bethke, but it's also Zach Elementary School and Kennard Middle School. And I'm just so proud to be associated with people like our teachers, our school leaders who are dedicated to not just teaching, but learning about our kids' needs through professional learning communities. Those needs and those meeting times are incredibly important, and I'm grateful for seeing what that looks like at a high level. It's great that we have models, and national models in our backyard. As you had an opportunity, all of you, to see the incredible video of what's been happening across our system, I firsthand, on the first day of school, joined Kristen and Rob and other people across the district in visiting six schools that day. Starting my day off at Lincoln Elementary School, or Lincoln Middle School, excuse me, was a great treat. It showed to me the importance of the transition days for our sixth graders and our ninth graders. It was incredible whether you were walking off of, or coming off of a bus, or being dropped off by a parent, or walking to school, you weren't just treated with a smile. All of the students there that I witnessed were actually treated by acknowledging who they were and what their strengths were. We missed you. How have you been doing on this? What has your summer been like? But calling people by first name on the first day is an aspiration that many schools try to set out to do, and I saw Lincoln Middle School actually accomplish that. I then had an opportunity to jump on Route 179 from Lincoln to Tavelli Elementary School and riding with driver Eric, who not only prioritizes safety in his role as a bus driver each and every day, but how he maximized relationships with the students who were on his bus. I had an opportunity to get off at the various bus stops and talk to families, many of them who are PSD employees, waiting for their children to go off to school was a treat and a joy to connect with people about the excitement around what this district offers when we reopen. So I was just really grateful for that opportunity. Spent the day with Rob eating lunch at Linton Elementary School, speaking with second graders. And they had asked me point-blank to please consider allowing us all to bring our puppies back to school. There's a lot of joy when we bring puppies. Many of them asked me to consider building pools on the roofs of Linton Elementary School to kind of offset some of the heat activities that I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. But we have a new principal there, James Garcia, and the school just went off without a hitch. And just to hear the creative juices and ideas of the students, it was nothing but a treat. And if you had an opportunity to see my Twitter feed today, we had a student that asked me when I walked into his second-grade classroom with the suit, he not only asked me if I shopped at Macy's, he asked me if I had just come from church. And we, I really got a kick out of that. And so he had an opportunity to wear my jacket for a little bit of the day and connect with him. But there's just, our kids are amazing, and so are our teachers and faculty and staff members. Spent some time at Wellington Middle School, High School, and saw great things happening there, and really excited about the new leadership up at the school with Troy Crofts taking over. There's a general sense of enthusiasm. That building is still as beautiful as it was the first day that it opened, and seeing it be maximized with even more students as we opened another grade level up there was a treat. And had an opportunity to go to Centennial High School, saw their discovery program in action on the first day, which is a re-engagement exercise that takes six weeks for students that are on the margins, that they really, truly, in their hearts are committed to finishing high school, but they have experienced a lack of success up to this point. And to see them go deep on a class around personal ownership and personal responsibility and realizing that we have individual choices that are required of us in order to experience success, it's not just about the others who help us, to see how that was taught with compassion, yet conviction, was super, super inspiring. And then I had an opportunity to end my day with many people over at Weber Middle School, and I want to thank Brian Davis, who's in attendance here tonight, for his thoughtful leadership. That school just breeds community. If you want to see what instruction looks like on day one, visit Weber Middle School. And while I want to acknowledge the focus on instruction, there was also a focus on cultivating relationships, making sure that we don't skip over getting to know who people are. Now, I share all of those good things to recognize that we're also experiencing challenges. It's hot, y'all. Mother Nature is not my friend. And I want to just acknowledge that it's not hot just for our students, it's hot for our staff as well. And I'm really hopeful that cooler days are on the near horizon and will prevail to make sure that we have a more comfortable learning and work environment for all that is involved. We recognize as a system that temperatures in this area across the globe have increased over the last few years. And that means it's going to be hotter in our buildings and our classrooms, especially around the start of our school year. And I want to acknowledge that head-on, knowing that there's probably some people that want to speak about this tonight. What you might not know, or maybe you do, is that 33 of our 54 school buildings in PSD currently do not have air conditioning. That is not going to be acceptable in the future. We are going to need to engage the community to identify thoughtful solutions around how we tackle that. And I'm really grateful that this board had solicited an outside entity, McKinstry, who has been here to talk a little bit about solar feasibility. We are in the near future are going to talk about what it's going to take to actually provide robust air conditioning throughout our system. And I see that not just as offsetting the temperatures in the first couple of weeks of school, it opens up the opportunity for our buildings to be accessible year-round. And so I really want to educate the community that this is not about an investment in a couple of weeks, that we just need to suck it up. This is about trying to figure out how we can be creative and innovative around our scheduling, around our extracurriculars, and create environments that are safe and also enjoyable. As you see that, that's not sustained in ways that we can't create an environment where it's cool. That said, our community has questions, and I understand that, understandably so, in how we're addressing the various temperatures that exist in PSD. And I want to acknowledge it on the front end, what measures that we are taking. And I also want to recognize that as I share these, people may say that's not enough. And I respect if you're on that side of this equation as well. I had an opportunity yesterday to visit Fort Collins High School in the afternoon and connect with teachers, students, and principals, and visit various classrooms. And yes, I did have the courage to go on the second floor in the afternoon. And I will be honest, that we have classrooms that while I was there persisted in the high 80s, 87, 86.8 degrees. It was uncomfortable. What I can tell you that I'm really proud about it is, in an unfortunate situation, the professionalism that was exhibited by our employees to not pass that frustration on to our students and ensure their first couple of days of school were still met with joy, that we're still met with enthusiasm around being immersed in instruction and learning. I thought some of our teachers had really creative ideas that may fall flat in the eyes of the community, but even like a rolling video of a blizzard on one screen where students were just trying to immerse themselves in the mindset of what it feels like to be cool, knowing that we need to endure this for a little bit of time. We have in the past thought and have actually executed on having early release days when there have been persistent heat in our community. That has not been the case yet, even though it probably feels that way. On the third day of school, we have not persisted and endured heat, but those people who are in those same classrooms know what that experience is each and every year. And I understand that creates a lot of frustration, but on the other side of that is having all of our students, 30,000 students, go home two hours early creates another impact in the community as well, which makes the situation feel like a lose-lose at times. There are many families that are dependent upon us to feed their children twice. Even though we are an academic institution, we also provide childcare opportunities for families to be able to work. And not everyone has the flexibility to be able to pivot on a dime in the event that we make hard decisions. And that's really tough to endure that, especially knowing that there are several of our schools that have air conditioning. So it's not equitable or equal in this particular space. I do want to acknowledge that families do have choice, and I want to be clear and careful in this space. Families, if you need to take your child out early, we want your children in school every day, all day, for the entire day. But if you have an individual situation where you feel it is in the best interests to excuse your child, we want you to know that that is allowable under our current policies. We want to make sure that we're trying to create environments where we keep people in school. I was really pleased that the schools that I went to, they had full classrooms. People are showing up day one and learning. But if, I'm not, as a district, we as a district are not trying to take away parents' rights on being able to ensure that if they have to make a decision that's in the best interests of their children, they have the ability to do that. And I just want to remind our community of those particular choices. Our staff, and we have made sure last year that we distributed fans to every single classroom. I know that's not sufficient. In a lot of our classrooms and our hallways, we do have functional fans, but we also had ordered swamp coolers, especially for many of our second-story classrooms, who are asking for staff to continue to make sure that those things are on. But that also creates other challenges too, with noise and papers blowing around. And so this, it's not a perfect situation, but we're trying to make the best of a hard and difficult situation. Staff is continuing to be encouraged to pull their shades down on their windows when feasible and to move their classes. And I saw this at Fort Collins, where second-story classrooms were moving to empty first-story classrooms on the first level, as well as in outdoor shaded areas, which I thought was really creative and thoughtful. We encourage our staff and our children to continue to wear lightweight clothing, to ensure that we're bringing water bottles and staying hydrated throughout the course of the day, and that we're just checking in with each other to make sure those people are not feeling, you know, if they're not feeling well, that we have an opportunity to acknowledge that and take action to make sure that people continue to be and feel safe. We're also doing our very best as an operations staff to bring in, as you can tell, even though it's really hot during the day, it's cooler in the evenings. And so we're trying to be as intentional as possible about drawing cool air from 3:00 AM all the way to 8:00 AM, from the air outside, bringing that inside to ensure that as we start the day, it's as comfortable as possible. But I have experienced firsthand in many of our schools, that wears off in some schools more quickly than others. And it's just a very difficult situation that we're going to need to find a community-wide solution for. The last thing I want to share with you is about safety. The challenge of this situation is that it may be beneficial to bring, keep our doors open, and to continue to bring in air throughout the day. But as we all know, that also provides safety challenges and risks. And so I want to just acknowledge to the community that district-wide, our expectation is that all of our exterior doors at PSD remain closed and locked during school hours. And that's not because we don't want to bring in more air from the outside into the inside of the facility, but while we're also prioritizing heat mitigation, we're also prioritizing safety measures, which actually amplifies the complexity of this challenge. And I know my words fall flat for those who are actually dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, but we're doing everything that we can, and we're going to need to engage the community thoughtfully around how we do this work moving forward. You know, tonight is a night where we're going to focus on how do we continuously improve this system through the lens of our strategic plan and our district UIP. And what I'm proud about those particular plans, and you'll hear more certainly really soon about this, is that it's focused on our core business. But as the public or any members of the community who are listening here tonight, please know that while we are focusing on improving our core business, what's happening behind those scenes is the development of a long-range plan that involves these particular things around sustainability, around HVAC, around how do we take the various pieces of equipment around our school system and make sure that it's up-to-date, modern, and working at a high level. We have a lot of creative approaches to do a lot with very little resource. And there's a shelf life on our ability to continue to persist in that type of environment. So we will continue to engage in those conversations so the community and this board are fully up to speed around what's possible in those particular areas. But I just want to reiterate, it will take community-wide support. It will take us to lead with our hearts and be incredibly empathetic. And we will have to make hard decisions in the near and far future to make sure that we're doing everything we can to maximize what's possible for this school year. But I am, as the superintendent, incredibly pleased on what I've seen so far, but I also want, I think it's important to acknowledge the challenges that exist as well. So thank you for allowing me to open up this evening, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for your remarks, Brian, and thanks for all the clarification and information around the heat situation, because I know that's been a challenge, and we've certainly received emails about that as well. And yeah, I was excited to go to the schools with you as well. We went to Laurel and then Wellington, so that was, that was good. The next item on our agenda is community comment. I want to remind us all for our hopes for this section of the agenda, "The Board Desires to Hear the Viewpoints of All Stakeholders, Including Students, Employees, Parents and Guardians, and Community Members." And input that is most helpful to the Board of Education and district staff is that which celebrates successes that support the educational and social-emotional experiences of our students, or which identifies a problem and proposes a solution for us to consider that ultimately improves the educational and/or social-emotional experiences of the students. Public comment is designed to address issues, not personalities or personnel matters. Please keep your concerns and comments focused on the district. It is important to note that the board does not generally respond to remarks made during community comment. Our lack of response should not be construed to mean that we agree or disagree with what is said, or with the description or interpretation of events as presented by any speaker. Further, we recognize that some, although by no means all, of the remarks that have been made are factually inaccurate. We choose not to respond or correct the record here because formal board meetings are not the time or place for back-and-forth dialogue. Although we may disagree on some things, I know that we all want the best educational experience for our students. And as we participate together in this community comment session, we should model And as we participate together in this community comment session, we should model for our students how to listen, how to interact respectfully, even with those with whom we disagree, and generally how to show up each day. This opportunity for public comment is for members of the community who registered to speak by the designated deadline. Those people will be called on to make remarks in the order that they signed up, and each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. I will be fairly strict about when that red light starts flashing, asking you to finish immediately. We have nine speakers this evening, and our first speaker is Jeff Afterheidi. Welcome.
My name is Jeff Afterheidi from Wellington, Colorado. The term "bread and circuses" dates back to ancient Rome, signifying the practice of appeasing the masses with superficial distractions. Today, it symbolizes how entities mask pressing issues with superficial measures. That's precisely how I characterize Brian Kingsley's superintendent report in this Board of Education's handling of the Tyler Zanella case. Let's consider the following. I requested from PSD the safe-to-tell cases for the year. On May 24th, the Director of Human Resources resolved six cases, case number 1446, 1450, 1480, 1481, 1482, and 1487. However, only resolution dates were provided to me, not their initiation dates. And intriguingly, a month later, both PSD Human Resources directors resigned, as evidenced by the 6/22/2003 Personnel Action Report. This resolution coincidentally fell on the same day the Coloradoan highlighted Tyler Zanella's intentionally sadistic misdeeds. It was later reported that six non-verbal autistic children were harmed by Tyler Zanella. Indications from the resolution dates suggest Mr. Kingsley might have been privy to this information earlier, but chose silence during the May 23rd board meeting. Alarmingly, at a crucial June 13th meeting where distraught parents sought answers, Mr. Kingsley was absent opting for private meetings in Washington, D.C. To add insult to injury, while these parents were in court on June 15th, the board celebrated with the private party on June 17th, marking a "successful school year." The board's previously mentioned seeking legislative resolution concerning hiring individuals with child abuse records. But let's be clear, Tyler Zanella was charged with the DUI on August 18th, 2022, not child abuse. Eleven days later, he was working at PSD's Transportation Department alongside his partner. This isn't legislative mishap like you're attempting to spin it. It's an egregious lapse in judgment. Let's discuss accountability. Superintendent Kingsley's allegiances appear divided. Is he serving the interests of entities like Chiefs for Change and Peter Gorman? Or is he truly committed to PSD's Board of Directors and by extension, our children? He reports to you, the directors, not the other way around. In closing, we need genuine leadership that values the children's welfare over your optics. We don't need distractions or bread and circuses. What we need are truth, action, and accountability.
Sorry, thank you. Our next speaker is the Reverend Dr. Marta Fioriti. I hope I got that right, otherwise, please correct me. Okay. Welcome.
My name is Reverend Dr. Marta Fioriti, and I am the minister, one of the ministers, at Plymouth Congregational and Open and Affirming Congregation of the United Church of Christ. And I am also a parent of a student in Pooter School District. And I come today to speak in support of our LGBTQ+ students in the Pooter School District. And I do so first as a citizen. In democracy, we are all equal, each with dignity and worth. We go first and foremost to our nation's constitution to affirm the dignity of each person, including our students who are trans, queer, non-binary, gay, lesbian, and bisexual. Ensuring that each student has what they need to flourish in our school system is part of being a democracy. Flourishing for a non-binary or queer student may necessitate asking their preferred pronouns and using them. It may necessitate ensuring that books that can be controversial but that represent LGBTQ community are in our school libraries, that those books are not banned because some parents find their content objectable, and it may necessitate sexual education and sexual ethic courses that cover many different gender identities and expressions. I dare say that it not only necessitates, but is also lifesaving for these students. Simply using the correct pronouns, so simple, right, is critical to the well-being and health of each student. So I come to you first as a citizen, but I also come to you as a minister in the Christian tradition. For reasons beyond my understanding, many efforts across the country would ban books, ban sexual ethics classes, and even ban the mention of gay parents and gay students in public schools. A lot of those are represented as a Christian movement. Many of my Christian ministerial colleagues, and I do not subscribe to that narrow view of Christianity. We come before you pledging support of our LGBTQ, queer, non-binary, gender-fluent students in our schools, and will fight to ensure that they are protected as people so that they, like our students, might flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Woodrich. Welcome.
Hi, all my friends call me Meg, so hello. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Meg Woodrich. I have three children, one's a first grader, and the other two are coming up into PSD. I also happen to be a teacher at Fort Collins High School, and Superintendent Kingsley visited my classroom yesterday, which was such a treat. I have a few questions for you, which you can answer in your mind, and if you don't know the answer, I can help you out. At what temperature do you set your home thermostat? Is it seventy-two? Is it seventy-four when you're trying to save money? At what temperature is your office thermostat? Or this very room? And what is the OSHA recommendation for indoor work environments? It's not a law, otherwise I wouldn't be here, but it happens to be sixty-eight to seventy-six degrees. And what's the temperature of the hot room in a research study done to determine whether heat increases aggression? And yes, it does. The hot room was eighty-six degrees, which is, quote, "as high as the researchers figured they could go without endangering people's health." Sounds pretty hot, right? Well, let me paint a picture of my classroom for you. I teach at Fort Collins High School. I'm on the second floor. I have a large wall of south-facing windows that do not open. I have a door that leads to a hot and busy hallway. I have a swamp cooler, which helps make things more humid. I have a box fan, which helps about four students at a time. I have up to thirty-two students in my room, and when I walked in this morning, it was seventy-six degrees. At the end of the day today, my classroom was ninety degrees. And my thermostat's by the door. It's about three degrees hotter by those south-facing windows. I've heard a variety of solutions mentioned, and I'd like for you to expedite any and all of those solutions and continue to think creatively about how to solve this issue. Ninety degrees is not acceptable. It's not conducive to teaching and learning, and it's really uncomfortable for all of us. We're trying our best to be professional, and it's hard. There are two thousand students at Fort Collins High School, something over two hundred staff members, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Kirsh. Welcome.
Hello, thanks for listening tonight. Hope everyone had a pleasant summer. I am here tonight to reintroduce myself and Community for Sustainable Energy and to make a few action requests. A big part of my job is a role as an educator. It's to educate the Community for Sustainable Energy staff, the general public, and when I'm here, it's to share with Pooter School District. To educate effectively, I need to have quality information from which to teach. So I spend a lot of time reading, listening to, watching news, interviews, reports, studies, and I talk to people that are a lot smarter than I am. And my role is to take that information, distill it down into something that you and I can understand and take action on. It's taken me a long time and a lot of specific area focus to learn what I have on this topic. And it wouldn't be fair to expect you to learn this in a couple of three-minute speeches. So I am requesting that each of you meet with me to have a little bit more in-depth discussion about this, especially you, Brian. I am available for lunch, coffee, happy hour. I'll move anything around except my upcoming wedding anniversary. As you all know, my role is not only as an educator, but also as an instigator. See Force as a Grassroots Campaign. We bring the voice of your constituents to you to demonstrate public support. These letters are from people, the latest batch of letters, from people asking you to pursue this and to take the meeting with me. When it comes to sustainable energy solutions, PSD's done a really great job with energy efficiency. You've discovered that investing in efficiency isn't only about reducing pollution, it's about saving money, money that could go to air conditioning maybe. Similarly, the potential for solar paired with electric buses, demand management, and even electric vehicles for teachers is about saving money, much more money than what has been saved so far with building efficiency. There's a lot of exciting potential here. How much does PSD spend on electricity, natural gas, and bus fuel? With some hard work, there's a potential to bring those energy costs to zero. And I'll be back in future meetings to explain how that is possible. Tonight, I'm requesting information about the McKinstry study. I've shared the study with some solar experts, and there seems to be some inconsistencies in their methodology. For example, they use a twenty-year payback cap, but they use a twenty-five-year cash flow model. There are a few very important cost and savings calculations missing from the equations, and there are inconsistencies in the conclusions within the report. And maybe there's a perfectly good explanation for this. Can you get to the bottom of what's going on here? One more thing for now about the study. Will you please request that McKinstry finish their job by evaluating rooftop potential for buildings that need re-roofing? Including roof replacement costs is a common industry practice for solar feasibility studies. McKinstry dropped fifty-six out of the seventy-six projects from the study because the roofs are not new. So they really only studied twenty projects. Is that what we paid for? So in conclusion, please ask McKinstry to clarify their methodology and to finish their job by evaluating rooftops in need of replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Hagman. Welcome.
Good evening. I appreciate the little film clip, Brian, where they showed the class of 2027, right? I was thankful I could graduate in sixty-seven, so I'm always out of that. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I am here not to condemn you or to rail on you, but I am here to hopefully reason with you. I was once a board member. We had to make decisions probably similar to what you do. We certainly were not perfect, and you most likely are not better in that area either. I appreciate you serving as board members. It is really a full-time job, if one takes it seriously, and I trust that you do. We made a decision in that board once that was based on incorrect information. That was just a little bit untrue, and without thoroughly checking caused much heartache after we made that decision. Years later, I understood what we had done, and God dealt really strongly with me to go and ask for forgiveness and make things as right as possible. I did that, and it helped all of us to find forgiveness and healing. There are still scars in our lives, though. God takes very seriously the decisions we make, especially ones affecting children. I think good things come out of Pooter School District, many good things. But I want to talk to you about something that's probably a little negative. Right now, you're dealing with and seemingly have made decisions that are adversely affecting families, and in my not-so-humble opinion, are destroying young lives, families, and futures. The early sexualization of innocent children is sinful. I don't care how you look at it. I don't care who says it isn't. They're wrong. It is sinful. As a leader of children, God has placed upon you a mantle of leadership, that whether you like it or not, it is there, and you and I will be judged by what we do and how we do it. Today, I plead with you that if you in any way are involved in this destructive process, to simply stop, turn around, and go the other way by working to uplift kids going through mental searching and lift them and their parents up and bless the family. Don't turn them over to so-called mental experts who only work towards the destruction of little kids. How shameful for all concerned. I am not your judge, but there is one who is, and I promise you, he will make things right for the kiddos and judge all those involved. I'm going to quote from an author that you probably all know. It says in Luke seventeen, one through two. It says, "Then he said to the disciples, 'It is impossible that no offense should come.'"
I need for you to finish your remarks.
"But woe to him through whom they come. It would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck, and he were thrown into the sea, that he should offend, then he should offend one of these little ones." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Becky Woodcox. Welcome.
My name is Becky Woodcox, and I've been part of the Shepperson STEM Elementary stuff since nineteen ninety-eight. And I'm here tonight representing myself and the views and opinions that I express are my own. Shepperson is one of the older buildings in the district. Unless you work in an older building, you might not be aware of some of the challenges we face. Crowded spaces, limited and outdated facilities, problems with drinking water, and no effective cooling systems to battle the annual August heat. There are many things that make older schools challenging, but tonight I would like to talk about the heat, the August heat, in buildings with, in a building with more than four hundred students and almost eighty staff members and no effective cooling system. It's typically hot in August in Fort Collins. Historical records show multiple days in the eighties and nineties, and for twenty-five years, I have experienced hot days in August in Shepperson. Not just a little hot, very hot, hot outside and hot inside the building. On those hot days, we walk into the school at seven-thirty in the morning to inside temperatures hovering over seventy-six or seventy-eight degrees. As the outside temperature rises, we've recorded inside temperatures of up to eighty-nine or ninety degrees, and not just for a day or two, often for days in a row, twenty-five years. What has happened in those twenty-five years? Years after year, year after year, I've been told, don't complain about the heat. It's not that big of a deal. Dress lightly, be sure to stay hydrated, run your fan, open your windows. Side note, there are no windows that open at Shepperson. We take photos of the thermostats, and we carry around digital thermometers to monitor the heat. We sweat and become red-faced, and some of us become lightheaded and faint. Our parents gift us fans by the dozens as well as the school district, and we prop the doors open and run jet engine fans in the mornings to supposedly cool the building down. Through it all, we feel like we're teaching in a hot air tunnel, making it noisy and hard to think clearly. None of these efforts help much. We might drop the temperature a degree or two. We come home feeling draggy and headachy and sweaty and exhausted from having to talk over fans and being hot for six to eight hours. Some years, it might be a day or two, and other years, it could be a week or two of this hot weather. And we keep being asked to suck it up, to dress lightly, to stay hydrated, and run fans year after year after year with no real solutions. I invite you to come spend a few days, a few of these hot days with us, not just a quick drop-in, come spend a full day or two with us. It's tough, and I grow weary of being what feels like being ignored. With due respect, if one more person tells me to dress lightly, stay hydrated, and run fans, I think I could explode. I'm intelligent enough to know that. Please stop asking us to suck it up. My colleagues and I have lots of reasonable ideas to help address the problem. Please respect us enough to listen and work with us to find long-term solutions. Empathize with us, make this problem a priority. Don't lecture us during the hot days with what I should do to stay cool, and then put the issue aside when the hot days of August end, as it has for years. Please find a way to update our older buildings. We do amazing things at Shepperson, just look at our test scores and look at all the programming we offer. Please help us beat the heat and help keep our school cool. Thank you. We need to have healthy and equitable schools. We need to have healthy and equitable schools.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erin Green. Welcome.
Mr. Kingsley, the video you showed earlier in the meeting was not accessible to the visually impaired, but you talk about community. Be a leader and turn the AC off in this building. The food at headquarters should be the same as the food at camp. I heard some deeply concerning things at the last school board meeting that I felt needed to be addressed. Our community is grieving, and in my opinion, the events last spring rise to the standard of a hate crime because the children were violently targeted because of their disability, while another PSD employee stood by and watched. You hired this former PSD employee, knowing his past criminal history involving children, and then put them with non-verbal disabled kids. Mr. Kingsley made a shocking admission at that last meeting. Mr. Kingsley announced that underneath his leadership, our children are not safe in PSD schools or buses, at least until the legislature takes some unspecified action. Mr. Kingsley's message is that there are other PSD employees with similar histories as the employee accused of these atrocities. It could be a substitute teacher, a bus driver, a front desk worker, a maintenance technician. All PSD staff should be suspect until some legislation is passed, was the message that Mr. Kingsley delivered to the board and the community two weeks ago. Mr. Kingsley, we need a leader, not an excuse-maker and not a blame pusher. We need something more. Please tonight, send a message to every PSD employee that immediate reporting of any suspected abuse means reporting outside the district first. You don't phone a coworker, you don't consult a school psychologist, you don't go to a principal or to administration, and you certainly don't go to lunch. You protect children by reporting, and then you follow up with supervision or supervisors in that order. Show us where your priorities lie. The legislative fix is not some law that would prevent PSD staff from making horrendously bad hiring decisions based on nepotism, but one that would hold district administration accountable for the lack of institutional control that allowed this individual to be hired, to be placed with the district's most vulnerable population, and then to be unsupervised and unmonitored while complaints went uninvestigated. Mr. Donovan, your comments were also concerning at the last board meeting. You're either a part of the solution or part of the problem. Gaslighting the community with, "I'm a bus driver, I took the training, I know to mandatory report," is reprehensible because you know full well that the bus driver did not report the abuse, nor did several other staff. Your own monitoring report shows over 1,000 staff failed to take the mandatory reporting training, and that more staff took the bloodborne pathogen training than the mandatory reporting training, showing a clear cultural bias for protecting staff over protecting children. Culture is a reflection of leadership, sir. Our community will remember you this fall. Mr. Anderson, on the other hand, thank you for providing a public forum to access the elected officials that Mr. Kingsley is trying to transfer blame of this incident on.
I need you to finish your remarks.
This Saturday at 4:00 PM. I'm sure you will have a high turnout for your event, as many parents have deep concerns about how PSD has handled this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Meyer. Welcome.
This past week, I watched Chloe Cole's five-minute testimony before the U.S. Congress. I found myself overwhelmed by the feeling that there must never be another Chloe Cole. There must never be another normal, insecure, confused 12-year-old affirmed into an identity that is not her identity. There must never be another young woman with a body permanently mutilated by male hormones or marred by a surgeon's knife in a way that she will struggle with the rest of her life. We must protect these children. I know I'm talking about the most controversial subject in America. 22 states have now passed laws making what happened to Chloe Cole illegal. Other states, including our own, have passed laws requiring every officially-involved adult, including counselors, therapists, and even parents, to affirm their 12-year-olds in those choices. In some places, parents can lose custody of their children for failure to affirm that identity. All this means that there are very strongly divided views on the adult role for shaping the sexual identity of children, and those strongly divided views are in our community as well, and you have the challenging responsibility of leading in the midst of that. But no one on any side of this issue wants more young girls facing the future that Chloe Cole faces. When I shared about this two weeks ago, there were 49,000 people posting their regrets on Reddit. Today, there are 50,000. An avalanche is coming, an avalanche of human tears and bitterness. And by their own words, often the biggest influences come from voices around them, the internet, their peers, and their schools. I don't want to engage in specific controversies related to Pooter School District. I know there are parents who believe programs in PSD have failed their children in this very issue. May God grant you grace, wisdom, and stamina to handle all these challenges in the responsible way I know you intend. I just ask you again to pay attention to what all of us already know. Young teenagers have not yet figured out who they are. Life looks different at 25. Please be careful as you set the policies and programs that these children will judge you by in 10 years. Give Pooter School District a legacy that a future generation will thank you for. May there never be a young girl in Chloe's place as a result of the actions of any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Sky Marsh. Welcome.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Kingsley, and Cabinet. My name is Sky Marsh. I am both a teacher in PSD and a parent of two Rocky graduates proudly and a current freshman there. I'm here to tell you about the heat conditions at Weber Middle School. In our classrooms currently, an average of 30 students sit in 30-year-old desks they struggle to get out of, in 85-degree or higher temperatures, with multiple fans running simultaneously, drowning out both my voice and, more importantly, theirs. I arrive at 7:00 AM to open the windows to begin pulling in cool air. By 11:00 AM, I must close all of my windows and lower the blinds against the incoming heat wave. The box fan provided by the district, it ineffectively circulates the hot air like a desert wind. By 1:00 PM, students and staff are suffering, struggling to finish the day strong. By 2:00 PM, my clothes are soaked through with often visible sweat stains, as are many of the students, which is frankly quite embarrassing. My 86-degree room is not even the worst. Today, the classroom housing our autism program reached 88 degrees before 2:00 PM, a temperature that is neither conducive nor safe for learning. Students in this program are showing a spike in the aggressive behaviors in the afternoons, according to the teachers, creating an unsafe environment for all. Our students in wheelchairs are often soaked in sweat within an hour of arrival due to heat, taking away their dignity in front of peers and adults. As the heat increases in the rooms, students must often take frequent heat breaks in the hallways, sitting in front of those jet fans to cool off, which interferes with valuable time needed to be spent supporting their learning plans. I am here requesting equity for all students in all schools district-wide. Recently, new schools such as the Timnith Middle High have been constructed, including climate-controlled classrooms and brand-new furniture. When one population of students is provided with significantly upgraded surroundings, such as those, that should become the new standard of equity across the district. It is not equitable to expect some students and staff members to accept the conditions of extreme heat while others are blessed with coolness. We are all held to the same state standards, take the same tests, and live in the same district, yet only a portion of our population is given ideal conditions. Students in these drastically different environments are not being given equal footing. I'm going to skip to the two demands or requests I would have for this board. Number one, a clear plan of action to cool all district buildings within a timeframe shared with the community, which will hold PSD accountable to provide all students with similarly comfortable climates. And second, some kind of stopgap measure until then, including perhaps a set structured organized plan for early release when our non-air-conditioned buildings reach those extreme temperatures. Like some of the other teachers here, I would love to invite you to spend not just a few hours, but an entire day in our buildings. I would ask you to truly reach every child every day by giving equitable conditions in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes community comment for this evening. Pardon me. Our next topic is board topics and committee reports. If there are any members of the board who wish to report or make a comment, now is a good time to do it. Go ahead, Kristin.
Thank you. Ooh, that is loud today.
It is hot, yeah.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to say that I had a wonderful time visiting Lincoln Middle School as the kids got dropped off in the morning. It was so much fun, and then headed over to Tavelli, and that was a blast to watch the kids come in, you know, and reconnect with their teachers, and some of the kindergartners get to see their school for what would have been probably a second or a third time, but a first time as an actual student. So it was very, it was great. And then I got to go to Weber in the afternoon and had a wonderful time there. So just thank you all for letting me join you on that. Just an update, we had our first STACK meeting, Student Advisory Council meeting yesterday, and we have basically a great agenda coming up. Chase, one of our students, was there to help us set that. We have some great choices of students to choose from. We had roughly 40 people asked to be on STACK, which is amazing, and we are going to try and bring it down to roughly 20. We're going to see how we can do that. But I wanted to share with you all some of the students' concerns. We asked the students why they wanted to be on STACK, and they gave us, you know, we asked, "Do you have any topics that you'd like to see covered by STACK?" And so, just a few of them, I just wanted to point out. Yes, racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, ableism, bullying, littering, cyberbullying, drug abuse, harassment, and other important topics. That was one student. Okay? There was a couple of others. I mean, you can see we have lists and lists of things. We had a couple of people who actually set the agenda for us. They had four or five of these. Definitely, mental health is a big topic. The safety and respect for LGBT+ community is important to me and a lot of allies and members of the community. I would like to see mental health safety inside the school and the topic of kindness be studied by the STACK. So I just, you know, want to share that while some people think they may be helping young people, they really need to be discussing with young people what the true concerns young people have, and they may find out that they're different than what they suspect. So I am excited to work with the students that we get on STACK. I'm excited with the agenda. I'm excited for you all to see what amazing ideas they come up with, because they always do. And I'm excited, actually, for, hopefully, some of our STACK students will be watching this, because we had told them that a couple of their ideas actually ended up in the UIP. So, and then, of course, they asked, "What the heck is a UIP?" So I'm excited for them to watch that and see how their ideas are actually being implemented in our Unified Improvement Plan. So thanks so much.
Other comments or reports from the board? I'm sorry, Jess, did you have your hand up? No, sorry. Okay, I will just take a moment. I want to amplify a little bit on the remarks that, in light of the comments around heat and the billings, I'm just going to amplify a little bit on the remarks that Brian made earlier. I think the short answer is that this board, and I know Brian, and the administration recognize that this is a very difficult situation in the schools, in the schools that are not air-conditioned. There's no question about it. I'm not sure how much more we can emphasize that. The challenge that we have is that, as was pointed out, there are buildings that are air-conditioned, and there are buildings that are not air-conditioned. And the McKinstry study, we have a McKinstry study going on now about what it will take to air-condition the schools that are not air-conditioned now. And that study is going to be presented to the board, I think, on September 26th. Is that right? Yes. On September 26th. So I certainly invite anybody, those who are legitimately quite concerned about this situation in our schools, to pay attention when that happens and to give us your feedback and input when you see that. I think the challenge, as I understand it, and I will be more educated when I see that report, is that in order to put air conditioning in the schools that don't have it now, we have two problems. We have a problem of not having the money to do it, and we have a problem about how long it will take to do it, even if we had all the money right now. The last time this topic was discussed, and it has been discussed multiple times since I've been on the board, we need to find a funding source for tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. We'll find out what the number is when McKinstry comes to us with the information. And the time issue is that even if we had all the money right now, it would probably take, and again, this is old information, so McKinstry may educate me better, five to 10 years to get this done. Because we have 33, 33 schools that don't have air conditioning in them, and you can only do so many of these schools in the summer, both because of the amount of time in the summer, but more importantly, because of labor, the labor availability, and the parts availability. I can tell you right now, I know folks are frustrated on the, at Fort Collins High School, that the air conditioning that is there isn't working and hasn't been working since last fall. As an example of the challenge associated with supply chains, we ordered the parts to replace or to fix that air conditioner last fall. The final part for that is going to show up September 5th this year. Can't install it, we can't turn it on, we can't install it fully. Can't turn it on until that part arrives. And believe me, we've been chasing down, trying to make that happen. I know that's not, those are not happy pieces of news, right? But I want to make sure that we're transparent about what the challenges are we face and what our options are, you know? I mean, there are, there's a calendar committee that looks every year at this question about what we can do. There are challenges there about seat time, about the difference in the length of the semesters, and about community expectations for when the school year starts, when the school year ends, and when the breaks are. And changing the time in school or air conditioning the schools are sort of the two obvious solutions to this challenge. And then there's the stopgap stuff that we've been trying to do. And if, within the kind of constraints that I'm talking about here, if folks have creative, out-of-the-box solutions for how to address this problem, please send them my way. I'll be happy to read them and engage on them. So with that, anything else that the board wishes to address? Okay, then we will go to the consent agenda. Would any board members like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Okay, given that's the case, Jill, if you would call a vote on the, sorry, we need a motion. Yes, I'm sorry. Got distracted.
I move that the board approve and adopt the recommended actions for the items on the consent agenda.
Can I get a second? DJ's got a second there. Now, Jill, if you would please call a vote on this.
DJ Anderson.
Aye.
Jim Brokich.
Aye.
Nate Donovan.
Aye.
Kristen Draper.
Aye.
Rob Pedersen.
Aye.
Carolyn Reed.
Aye.
Jessica Zamora.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Jill. Our next section of the agenda is action items. We have an action item associated with resolutions that we are submitting to the Colorado Association of School Boards. Can I get a motion with respect to the resolutions? And then I'm going to ask you, DJ, to, as the Chair of Legislative Subcommittee, to summarize and/or read the actual resolutions. I don't think we need to read all the rationale unless we want to have a conversation about it. But in any case, can I get a motion with respect to the CASB resolutions? Go ahead, Kristin.
I move that the board approve the proposed Pooter School District Board of Education.
I move that the board approve the proposed Pooter School District Board of Education Legislative and Policy Agenda for 2023, 2024.
Yeah, I think, I think if I can get an amended resolution, or an amended motion, because we don't actually have Legislative and Policy Agenda we're doing with tonight. That's, we've done that historically, but that's not what we have now. So DJ, do you want to have a shot?
I move that the board approve the proposed Pooter School District resolutions that we are submitting to CASB.
Do I have a second? Go ahead, Jim. There's a second. Jim has a second. Now, DJ, if you could summarize those resolutions for us, or, and/or, if it makes sense, just read the resolutions. That'd be great, because there's like three of them or four of them, right?
Three of them, yeah. First of all, I apologize to the rest of the board for giving these to you a little bit later. Wordsmithing back and forth took a little time. So first off, I've got, we have a, the new teacher mentoring program. It's a grant program right now. We had a great presentation on it last year about how we've been taking advantage of it and the difference it makes. I've only got to talk to a couple of the teachers that have used it, but then the teachers that have promoted it and used it have been overjoyed with it. And to me, it made quite a bit of sense, so I brought it up to our legislative group as something that we could take to CASB. And my idea on it is basically, A, it's getting rid of the grant program aspect of it, and make it a yearly program where the CDE could then figure a percentage of how many hires we've had in the last three years and figure out a formula. But the gist of it is I'm asking for it to be a, an ongoing program, so something that new teachers can always have. Any questions about that one? I'll do it one at a time. Cool. Then we have an update to the CORA. A couple of things that, you know, we wanted to point out is, you know, we, we believe in CORA. We believe in being transparent. We do just want some things clarified, basically giving us a little more time to handle all the requests. In the last couple of years, the increase in requests have become greatly, have increased greatly. And it isn't just, you know, when someone asks for that, here, here's the record. We still have to have that go through a couple of people, making sure that we're not sharing information that is private or is stuff that cannot be shared. A great example of that is just like students' email addresses with their IDs in it, is one that we've talked about that maybe the, I'm sorry. That's one of them that we think needs to get updated on. But if there's data in there that is, that can't be shared, we have to go through. So it takes time to go through and do that process. And so we would like them to look at that, along with if the fees are, if they should be updated because of how much time, again, it takes people. People takes time and to make sure that we're paying them well. And then the other thing was to make sure that it's updated to the new communication forms that are out there. So student emails for us, they include the student IDs. We want to make sure that we keep those private. So there are certain things that the law doesn't really carve out that we think maybe needs to be updated on. Any questions on that one?
I don't have a question, but I would just clarify that in addition to the number of requests having grown in the, in recent years, the type of requests or the workload associated with each request has, in many cases, grown as well. Historically, we would have folks ask for a particular document, you know, what's the document associated with XYZ or whatever. We now have folks asking for any emails by one or more members of the executive team, for example, having to do with any particular topic or with a keyword of some kind or another. That is, it takes, as DJ pointed out, it takes a long time to go through that to make sure, to find those things, because we want to be, we want to be responsive to the CORA, and to make sure that in the process, we're not revealing personnel information or student private information, for example. So just a point of clarification for the community. Anything else that folks want to chat with, not chat, but respond to DJ's explanation? All right, go ahead, DJ.
The next one is the update to the state hiring law. This is, we would like to, in light of what has happened, we've learned some stuff. And one of the things that we think should be maybe corrected is licensed versus non-licensed employees. We believe that non-licensed should have the same list of, what's the right word? Misdemeanor restrictions, yeah, on there. Rob, do you have anything to add on that one?
Yeah, I'll just say the following. The current law, as it sits, it's state law, is that for felony convictions, and there's a list of the type. I don't have off the top of my head, nor do I have in front of me, the list of the particular felony convictions, but there's a list of them, that if a person has been convicted of such a thing, they are prohibited from being hired by the school district and other entities, I'm sure. But we're interested in the school district, right? So felony, licensed, non-licensed, same deal, right? What DJ is referring to is in state law right now, under licensed, it says that for certain misdemeanors, and again, I don't have the list in front of me, but for certain misdemeanors, licensed employees may, it, it, it it may be a basis for not hiring an employee, but you have to, based on the combination of federal and state law, consider factors such as how long ago it happened, how frequently it has happened, the nature of the, of the crime involved. Again, that list is there in the state law for licensed employees. There is no comparable list right now for non-licensed employees that even says to the school district, "You should consider this stuff," right? So I'm not, you know, so we are saying to the legislators that at the very least, those expectations in hiring in consideration should be comparable, right? I think, I think we're also, actually, we're going beyond that. We're saying that to the extent that it can be done, which is a matter of how state law interacts with federal law, to the extent that it can be done, we believe that folks who have been convicted of certain misdemeanors should, it should go in the prohibited list. You can't hire a person like that. Again, the legal intricacies of this are complicated, even though, as laypeople, we may feel it's a pretty straightforward thing to say. And we want to work with our legislators to tighten the law as much as we can going forward. Is that a fair characterization, do you think? Autumn, did you have any clarification on that? Because I know it's... No, you're good. Okay. That's the...
And then one more.
Yeah, I thought there were four.
And then the final one is, it is in regards to House Bill 211110, which was technology accessibility. Again, we believe that that is very important. Our concern is the fact that the rules are not set from the state OIT office, have not been set yet. And to really be able to do this properly and well, we feel like we need time after those rules are set to get that done. And so we're asking them to delay the enforcement of that until after, what we're saying, until two years after that, we'll see what we can get other people to jump on board with or not.
Other comments?
Cool.
Yeah, I'll just amplify that last piece, that there's also some federal action on terms of laws, or not laws, rulemaking in this area as well. And it will be important, from our perspective, that the, that the state laws and the federal laws are reconciled in this way, in this area, so we don't have conflicting directives. I don't really anticipate that we're going to have that, but nevertheless, two legislative bodies or two rulemaking bodies working in parallel might surprise us. So that's also a reason to consider delay in enforcement of this, of this worthy objective, right? Which is to make sure that, which is to make sure that all of the things that we're doing here are accessible. Any other discussion on this list of CASB resolutions? All right, Jill, if you'll call a vote on the acceptance of these CASB resolutions.
DJ Anderson?
Aye.
Jim Brokich?
Aye. Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristen Draper?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Jessica Zamora?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you so much, and thank you, DJ, for getting that together. And we'll look forward to hearing how those are incorporated, hopefully, into the CASB legislative agenda, which is really the objective of all this. Go ahead, Nate.
Are we going to work on a combined resolution on CORA, then? Or we think that one's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Sorry, for those who don't understand the entire context of what Nate just said, the deal is that, I think it's Boulder, yeah. Boulder Valley School District also has a resolution around CORA and will be looking to reconcile those, maybe beforehand, but certainly at the, at the meeting where these things are adopted for CASB, so that, so that it reflects the combined will of the CASB organization. And I think, and I think, by the way, while Boulder and Pooter both put those resolutions in, we have a lot of feedback from a lot of other school districts that this is a challenge for them as well, for the same reasons that were alluded to in our comments earlier. Any other comments or questions? Okay, the next item on our agenda is titled "Board Determination on Recommendation from Arbitrator", sorry, "Regarding Pooter Education Association Grievance." Can I get a motion with respect to this? Go ahead, Kristin.
I move that the board approve and adopt the recommendation from the arbitrator on the grievance filed by the PEA.
Do I have a second? Looks like Jess. Okay. Do we have a discussion or comment on this? Looks like Carolyn first and then Nate.
Hi, I just wanted to say that though the arbitrator did rule in our favor, and I understand why, because I feel like the REED Act was an unfunded mandate that came down from the state. I know it has to do with licensing, and, but I don't think that there is any end to the requirements that can be put on, on teachers and then the training hoisted onto them. And as far as having to take their time, their own personal time, to get that training done. So I think, personally for me, I think it's important to lean on our legislators about having unfunded mandates and putting that onus onto our teaching staff who are really already pretty overworked and stressed out. And so, yeah, going forward, like I said, I don't think that there's any end to the kind of requirements that the state can put out. And while we can't pay for all of those, because we just don't have the money for it, we should also be standing up for our staff to make sure that that's not being hoisted onto them.
Sorry, Nate?
My point is kind of along the same lines, that I think the state should provide funding for requirements such as this. So, thanks.
Other comments? Jim, did you want to say something?
Well, just ditto. And also, we're always making tough trade-offs in our budget, budgeting process, right? If we pay teachers more, we can't hire as many teachers. If we, if we put more money into buildings, we can't buy as many buses. I mean, it's always a tough trade-off. And it feels, I agree with the arbiter on this one, that it, that it's not reflected in the existing agreement. However, you know, we all support teachers here. I mean, some of my kids are teachers. And I think it's appropriate to bring these things into the negotiation process. I mean, that's how we get help, making these tough funding and compensation decisions. So that's where I'm at.
Jess?
I'm kind of glad that this process happened. I know that it's a really arduous process, and it's, there's a lot of stress that goes along with it. But I think, to Carolyn's point, it brings to light the level of things that we, our community just puts onto teachers, because we continue to expect them to do more every single year. And to let the community know, we can't just keep doing that. And so while I can agree with the arbitrator, I also appreciate that there's an opportunity to have this as a more public conversation.
Thank you. Kristin, DJ, anything? Go ahead, Kristin.
Ditto to all of that, and I think part of what we need to do is talk within our Legislative Committee about what things that we can do, so that we don't have these unfunded mandates, that when these mandates come down, that we say, "Well, let's do the fiscal bill that comes with that." And the other thing is that we can join teachers when they go rally on the Hill, which I'm not sure what date that is coming up, but I'm sure there's going to be one. Yeah, there'll probably be many. I know that we've done the Red for Ed. I know many of us here have done that Red for Ed rallying on the Hill as well. So I think there's a couple of ways which we can help to make sure that the state realizes what they're asking, the community realizes what the state is asking of our teachers, so we can go forward with that.
DJ, no? It's up to you. I can say something.
I think Jess actually said it really well, and I think it's, it really does help shine the light on these little extra things that keep getting thrown on the plate of the teachers. And I think it is, it is a great example of something that, it has well-meaning to, let's get these teachers trained up in a new literature program, because there's scientific basis, it works, all that stuff. But to be able to try to just, you know, throw it in there without thinking about the time and the energy that it takes sometimes is unfortunate, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'll just add that, I mean, I agree with what's been said here, but I'll just add also that this is not a hypothetical. It's obviously not a hypothetical with respect to the REED Act. That's already happened, right? But it's also not a hypothetical with respect to what might come forward. As I understand it, there's an additional requirement that's going to be for some or all teachers, I'm not sure of the scope, around training for students who are learning English language, that the state has made some requirements around extra training for that. As I understand it, there's no funding that's being given to school districts to pay teachers to do that, for example. And so there's an opportunity, even in this coming legislative session, again, I'm not sure about all the details, but in this coming legislative session, to talk, talk real, real hours, real costs. So if there's any other commentary, go ahead, Nate.
I would call a question.
Okay, we'll do that. Kristin, could you call a vote on this motion, please? Sorry, Kristin made the motion. Jill, could you call the vote on the motion that Kristin made?
Absolutely. DJ Anderson?
I just want to clarify, we're voting, so...
We're voting to approve and adopt.
Okay. I approve. Yeah, aye.
Jim Brokich?
Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristen Draper?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Jessica Zamora?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Our next item is an informational item. We're going to hear a first reading, effectively, of revisions to policy ICICA, the school year, school calendar instructional time policy. And in support of this item, Brian, you can introduce it, I guess, but according to my information here, Lauren and Autumn might, might have some things to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no present...
Yeah, there's no presentation for this item, but staff, particularly Lauren and Autumn are here to engage in any questions that the board might have.
Okay, I think in light of the possible intersection of the heat question with the calendar question, I think for the benefit of the public, it's at least worth quickly summarizing what this is and isn't. I know this is, I know this is not a response to the heat question, but I think we need to put that in the room. So Autumn, if you would, just give us the 30-second thumbnail summary of what we're voting on here, or what we're considering for next meeting's vote.
Okay. There's a few proposed changes within the policy. The main change is to alter the timeline for when the calendar would come to the board. Right now, the policy states that it would come by November 1st of each school year for the next school year. And the change would be to make that prior to the end of the school year, just to give a little bit more flexibility. I believe the intent is still to bring the calendar earlier on, or I guess later in the fall, but just to give some flexibility for when the calendar actually comes to the board. That's one change. Another change is to just add some language that's taken directly from state statute about providing a copy of the calendar to families and also providing notice for any sort of changes to the calendar, aside from any emergency closures, which would not have that notice option. And the other change in the policy is to include information on an option for Remote Learning Day if there is any sort of unforeseen condition or other emergency. This is not something that would need to be done by a school district, but in order to ever exercise that option, we need to put it in policy, so it's just there to provide that opportunity if we ever do need to move forward with one of those days. And I think that's most of the proposed changes within the policy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I would encourage anybody who's watching to go to the Board Agenda site, which if you don't know how to get there, we can get you there by calling the office or by going to the school district website, Board of Directors, and read it if you're interested in the details. Is there any discussion or comment on this? DJ?
Yeah, so I have one. I think it's, I'm not in favor of the idea of taking out completely the November aspect of it, because the way that it reads to me right now, it says prior to the end, prior to the end of each school year is when they have to do it. And I think it's better that we have that deadline at the end of the calendar year or December, November. I'm not hung up on the fact of the date as much as it happens before the end of that first semester, I guess. And so I'm not a big fan of how this part is worded. The rest of it, I think, looks great. I love the fact that we're changing all the D's. We're a big district, let's get there, okay. But that's my thought about the deadline, so.
Yeah, for those who are watching, DJ was talking about just a clerical change in the policy, which changes the reference to the district from a small D to a big D, which, from a grammatical point of view or from an editorial point of view, makes sense, but probably is not the most important thing. Other comments? I guess my understanding, Brian, is that it's your intent that the staff bring the calendar by the end of the school year, sorry, by the end of the calendar year, by the end of the first semester, and that, so I'd invite you to consider whether moving it from November to the end of the school year is overkill to get what it is you want done. And I think the other reality is, I mean, deadlines are deadlines, and if there are some extraordinary circumstances that require it to go beyond the end of the calendar year or whatever deadline is set, then I suspect this board will recognize that and work in partnership with you and the staff to do the right thing. So, that's my input. Other comments? Nate?
Yeah, I'd support it, being the end of the calendar year seems to make more sense in terms of scheduling and with schools, so, thanks. And families being notified early. Thanks.
Other comments? All right, again, we're not voting on this now. We'll be voting on it in the next meeting. I suspect it'll be on the consent agenda unless somebody wishes to pull it, and so we'll see it again then. And obviously, if anybody from the public has input on this, you're welcome to send us your input before that time. Our next informational report is, again, a proposed policy revision that we're hearing for the first time this evening, which means we will not vote on it this evening, it'll be voted on at the next meeting. It is a change, a revision to Board Policy Executive Limitation 2.9, which, again, if you can just remind us what that is, Autumn, and what the nature of the change is, that would be great.
Okay. This policy is currently titled Dealing with the Citizens of Pooter School District, and the proposed change is change the word dealings to working and change the reference to citizens throughout the policy to either members of the community or community members or Pooter School District community to basically change the word citizen to community.
Okay. I'll say I support that. I think that we have a community of folks who are in our district, and we ought to refer to them and refer to those, our stakeholders in that way. And so, it's a, I think it's a good change. Other comments? Okay, well, I think, I suspect, again, that will come back on consent, and if anybody is interested or concerned, you're welcome to read that on our Board Agenda site and send feedback or comments. Finally, and the sort of biggest item tonight in terms of, in terms of sort of weight going forward is the strategic plan that we have been working on and talking about for some time here, in combination with our Unified Improvement Plan, which I'm sure we'll get an explanation of what that is and why it's important. And then, at the end of this presentation, we will be having a motion to presumably approve the Unified Improvement Plan, which is a necessary step in our relations with state officials, education officials. So with that, Brian, if you'd like to kick this off, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you. I think, you know, I just want to take a second to pause, and as we get into this presentation, I think it's really important that we try to humanize this work. And it's mission critical that, in the role that I play in the system, that I don't begin to talk about where we're going in a way that's tone deaf to the community and the people who have just engaged in the process of governance in our system. We are asking people to do a lot. Our conditions are not yet equal or equitable across the system, which I think is really important as a result of that, that we have to figure out a way to create focus, to accept the fact that not everything is mission critical, that we need to think about what is absolutely essential for us to focus on, to train on, to develop people on, so we can begin to disrupt the data that suggests that not all people, both students and our employees, are experiencing this system the same. And as I shared with you earlier in the evening, this particular plan, our strategic plan, which I'm incredibly enthusiastic about, is really focused on our core business, learning and teaching. And I'm really, really proud of that. We need to figure out how to continue to find strategic ways in partnership with our stakeholders to identify what's most important, pay attention to it, invest in it, and then continue to see how that provides, you know, different outcomes across the system over time. And so as you think about the strategic plan, what I'm committed to with this team and with this district is to ensure that tonight shouldn't be, feel like there's any surprises. We have been talking about this work for almost a year and have really responded to stakeholder involvement to narrow down our focus even more than what we thought was a narrowed-down version of this, to really, you know, critically identify what are the areas which are literacy, mental health and belonging, and ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to graduate with options. I think those are areas that we can unify across the system on. They are areas that our data suggests that we need to continue to pay more attention to, and I think that there's also cross-cutting factors that if we invest in these particular areas, there will be a trickle effect in other areas. If more students belong, the likelihood that they are academic achievement outcomes increase is really, really highly likely. If we continue to improve upon our already incredibly high literacy rates and continue to push past proficiency as being the goal and ensure that all students can read and function and think critically at advanced levels, we have opportunities to continue to do amazing things in this system. But what's not lost on me is this system is already really strong. And so I want to honor all of the work that has happened across our systems and not just think about the hard truths of how do we go from strong to exceptional? And that takes courage, it takes vulnerability, and it takes all of us to think about how we do this together, and I'm just really, really proud of that. I'd love to start our presentation this evening by showing a video that helps kind of tell the story in terms of where we are and where we're going.
Pooter School District exists for our students. We're all about helping kids and young people achieve at their highest levels and pursue their dreams. And it takes our entire community through a focused effort to make sure that happens. The PSD Strategic Plan is that focused effort. It's the roadmap that will improve outcomes for all students. Our priorities are literacy, which goes far beyond learning to read. Reading to learn unlocks students' potential in all aspects of their education and lives. Mental health and belonging is about promoting emotional well-being and healthy connections with peers, adults, and others in their lives. Graduate with options. This means that when seniors cross the stage at graduation, they do so knowing that they have choices. This plan won't just sit on a shelf. This plan is a living, breathing representation of how we show up for kids. It's our promise to students and our commitment to public education.
Excuse me. I think what Matt shared, and he's the voice, for those of you that may not know, from our communications team, that shared that storyline, I do think what he shared about this being our promise, our brand promise, is significant. You know, when we hear PSD in the community, acknowledging what that stands for is really, really important. And this is an educational experience for all system stakeholders to engage our community thoughtfully around how we're doing this, not just what we're focused on, but how we're actually approaching it to make systems level change. What I also appreciate about this system is it continues to double down on its values to ensure that all people experience success and not some. And I really believe that as we think about this school system and building upon our strength that already exists, is that this is an investment in our people. As you think about aligning our work and creating, moving from a system of schools to a school system, that is complex adaptive work. And it is our greatest hopes to try to, greatest hope to try to figure out how to cultivate a win-win scenario that we are not adding more to a plate, but we're just, we're actually clearing a plate and saying, these are the most important things that we're paying attention to. I also think that's significant, and if you pay attention to the third bullet there, is that we have to outline our theory of action to identify how we actually are supporting and developing and cultivating our talent to be able to execute on where we are focusing our energy. And I think what makes this significant, when you look at other strategic plans, and there's a difference around our strategic plan compared to a lot of others, is that our DE 1.0 monitoring report, which is one of the most robust monitoring reports of any system in America, I will tell you, it tells us everything that we want to know about our students. What's missing from it is it doesn't necessarily tell us yet around how we're growing as adults, myself included. And so really trying to figure out that if we believe that our adult practices continue to take a stance of learning and we continue to be better, not just as educators, but as leaders, as central office support systems, if we continue to believe in a few things that we can measure and do well, then ultimately, we should see an improvement in student outcomes. But we cannot continue on the backs of students to measure them more, to get more data on them, when we recognize it's us that is influencing with their families, with our community, who, it is, we are influencing the experiences that they have. And so this plan in itself is a district-wide commitment, not just to improvement, but to accountability. And I think that's a nuance that needs to continue to be iterated across our communities. Like, we will be measuring this along the way, both around how we are improving as adults, but also how it's impacting or not impacting students positively. And I think that's something that's really, really important, because I think all of us want to be accountable to doing great work, that's why we get into this business. But thinking about what that actually looks like in public education, we have room to grow in those particular areas. And I'm really excited that the team has put together a thoughtful approach to being able to do that. Next slide, please. No surprises here. As you can see, this plan will continue to ensure that we're focused on our three system priorities of literacy, mental health and belonging, and graduate with options. We want to make sure that we're ensuring that all of our students, not some of our students, are continuing to benefit from that focus on those particular priorities. You will also see tonight that you will be voting on our district UIP later on this evening. The strategic plan sets the course, the district UIP begins to talk about what does that look like in the year ahead, in a very specific way. One has to cascade to the other, and the schools, as they're developing their school-specific plans, that cascades from the district UIP. So just in terms of how we structure this, not just on paper, but in action in terms of when assistant superintendents visit and support schools, when I support schools and go out and just become curious around what we're seeing, what we're not seeing, what's working, what's not, these are the focal points of what we're engaging in dialogue and conversations around specific school communities. I think it's also important to note, not just for our internal stakeholders, but external stakeholders, is that while we are focused on these things, you heard through the range, the broad range of different things that came up through community comments tonight, there's other aspects of the system's work that continues to be a priority. And I struggle to say that because it's, I don't want to be a hypocritical leader. A lot of things are important. Ensuring that safety and security continues to be something that is a focal point of this system each and every day will continue to be a constant. It's not going to be dictated by a three- to five-year strategic plan. Six years from now, we're going to still need to focus on safety and security. We also, as you heard me allude to earlier, there's operational sides of the house that we need to continue to focus on. And Director Brokish, you were so spot-on in realizing that there are tradeoffs around our investments and our energy and our financial resources around how do we invest in our organizational infrastructure, but also double down on our core business. I think in partnership with the various associations, this district modeled that in our last years of, last year of negotiations around having a collective effort in prioritizing our budget as an investment in people, but also our system priorities. The goal is to continue to sustain that high level of collaboration in the years ahead. And the other piece that I will share, too, is that diversity, equity, and inclusion can't be an initiative. It can't be a shiny object that this district chases in a vacuum. It needs to be something that we're thinking about our mindsets and our values and beliefs, and realize that that is adaptive work that doesn't live in isolation, and it's mission critical to actually achieving and disrupting the outcomes that the system currently has. And so as we transition to our next slide, you know, that work is going to be really important, and you're going to see some language that, and the community will see some and hear some language tonight from staff, that may be new, it may seem like edgy speak. So I just want to take a quick second to just level set for everybody that's paying attention to what we're launching here tonight, is that we have priority performance challenges that I actually, with our team, embrace as opportunities. Our data has signals in it that tells us that we need to be paying attention to a lot of things, but some more than others, and that's how our priorities were cultivated and created, and it's why the investments that this board had made in adopting a new curriculum and adding more mental health supports, and thinking robustly about how we continue to have students not just pursue four-year degrees, but how do we help offset the students who want to go directly into the workforce or military or two-year programs? That's going to, in order to accomplish that, we need to think differently, because that is not the system that we live and work in today. The theory of action that you've heard me allude to earlier is really a simple if/then statement. If we do this, then we should expect this as the result. But I want us all paying attention to that if part of the sentence, because the if part needs to be explicit around what we're expecting staff with partnership of our nonprofit sector, with our families, to be able to do and to learn in order to grow as a community so ultimately, students can grow with us. And then we have key strategies that are important to continue to ensure that we're leveraging that, not just investing in it, but giving people time. These particular priorities are not going These particular priorities are not going to be fully actualized in terms of improvement in one year. We should see this as a multi-year effort towards improvement, where we show each other as humans grace, compassion in terms of our experiences with learning, sometimes unlearning, sunsetting practices and things that no longer serve our students well, and taking a stance of not just looking about what we can do professionally, but DEI work also forces us to look within our hearts and within our minds and our lived experiences to see what biases that we have that we potentially need to address in order to show up differently in our work to serve all people well. So I'm excited about that work. We're going to pivot here in a second to learning more about our DEI strategy and how we're structuring ourselves as a school system in order to accomplish that. But I think it's important that we continue to stay data informed in this work. And I just, I want to continue to double down on our principles of community, of taking a stance of learning, focusing on diversity, also thinking about inclusion, respect, courage, and action. All of these things can't be words on a piece of paper or on a website. They have to be actualized in what you see in terms of how we're approaching people in our learning strategies and how we're thinking about our core business differently to support our students. We have a lot of incredible staff members that are both here at the table, also here in a partnership with us, not just to be visible in the work, but we'll have some opportunities to engage with you this evening. But I think I'm turning it over to Eric, our chief HR officer, to talk a little bit more about how we're structuring ourselves to be more focused uh, in our DEI efforts moving forward. So Eric, welcome.
Okay, so got a lot of buttons to move. So hopefully, hopefully this is, uh, you can hear me there. Um, so as Brian pointed out, we are, um, not highlighting the DEI component as a specific, um, shiny object. It's not just one project or one thing that we will be doing. DEI is really something that needs to be, um, included in every, every bit of work that we do and everything um, that we set as a goal. So the DEI committee has developed a new framework for how it is doing its work. And in doing that, it is also working towards developing a work plan and a work map for the 2023-24 school year. Um, once that work map is completed, uh, it'll be brought back and, uh, shared, shared with the board and with, uh, with our, our systems. And, um, including, included in that work map, uh, will be a whole variety of different projects that we believe we, uh, have capacity to achieve in the school year. Among those would include things like, uh, completing training for both board and for the cabinet in this DEI lens and how we approach our work. It would include, um, an, an update to our anti-bullying, uh, policy and, uh, integrating our principles of community into how we do our work, how we treat each other, um, how we approach, um, classrooms, parent teacher conferences, and how to integrate that principles of community into our everyday work.
Thank you, Eric. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Just as members of the team continue to take on different roles in the presentation, for the community, if you can introduce yourself and your title along the way, that would be wonderful. Okay? Thank you.
Absolutely. Dwayne Schmitz, Chief Institutional Effectiveness Officer. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, so as we engage in this work, you know, data-informed action steps, we've got the UIP and the strategic plan. And in the past, we've talked with the board about how the monitoring report, which was mentioned earlier, DE 1.0, is supposed to dance with the UIP. Cause really the UIP is the adult actions, the steps, the plans on how we're moving to the next levels. And the monitoring report is looking back and talking about how we done and how are those outcomes um, that are really student outcomes. I want to mention as we, um, head into this process that we use body of evidence from multiple years in a row and multiple different sources of data, which includes everything from achievement data, growth data, but it also includes connections data, Healthy Kids Colorado data, um, discipline data, all manner of data that we look at to kind of set the stage for what our, um, priority performance challenges are. And then we address those priority performance challenges through both the strategic plan and the UIP, which are very, very aligned. It's critical that those two documents are aligned tightly. And I'm sure that the board, as they've read through both of them carefully, probably multiple times, can see that alignment. Um, we've run processes with staff and staff walk away from those processes, seeing that alignment, and they appreciate that alignment. Um, I want to mention that we have accelerated the timing of the UIP. If the board thinks back, it was September, um, 27 last year that we are sitting here doing the same thing of looking at the UIP. So we're about a month in front of that. That's by design. We're benefiting from the work on the strategic plan and the alignment between the two to kind of accelerate our timeline on the district UIP. The importance of that unified improvement plan or UIP being accelerated is it buys our schools about seven to eight weeks to have the UIP in hand that hopefully the board approves tonight. So they can align their school unified improvement plans with the district unified improvement plan. I want to say a thank you to the district, uh, um, accountability committee. And Becky is sitting right behind me here and spoke earlier, and she's a member of the district accountability committee, and I want to say thank you. Um, they worked hard and fast to get this done a month early, and they understood the importance of that work so that we could better support the schools in aligning their efforts with the district's efforts. I also want to mention that the schools' plans are due to the, the state on October 16th. So that's where the eight weeks is coming from. And there's another component to this. The three assistant supes have done a great job of putting together a document. They've done this in past years, the assistant supes, but this year is kind of, they, you know, leveled up basically. It's a document that's very aligned with the UIP and the strategic plan. And it's utilized in a couple of different ways with the school leaders. And I won't say more because I don't want to steal their thunder for the meeting this Thursday, right? But, but I'm, the point is, we're able to align and organize our system towards these, um, several very specific efforts when we advance the timing like this a little bit. One of the important data sets that we get, um, from the state and by law, we have to respond to the data that we get in this district performance framework is what it's called a DPF. Schools get a similar document, a school performance framework, as you're aware. And if we have certain low marks on our district performance framework, by law, we have to address those. Now, Pooter School District has a long history of being accredited, and we don't get low marks on our district performance framework that requires that we address them specifically. So we have the freedom, um, from the state's eyes to just address the priority performance challenges that we've identified, which is great. I really quickly want to mention that there's a lot of change going on in this accountability world. We're about two years into now, a fit, a fairly full-blown assessment system in the state. This is the, the DPS and the SPF's we're going to get later this week, we believe, if not early next week, we haven't received them yet. Um, are no longer called transitional. So we're back online where we've got, you know, growth data from grades four through 11, which is the first in several years. Um, we have, we'll go into a little more detail in just a moment. But we're back on, these are important data points for us, but I want to point out and remind us, they're not the only data points. We use the monitoring report, we use our MAP data, Arcadians data, we look at multiple year trends. And yet this is important information. As the board looks at the list of the indicators, the key performance indicators, they'll all look familiar for these, um, 2023, um, performance frameworks, which are no longer transitional. Over the last five years, as you see a line graph in the upper right-hand corner, there's five years of data there that indicates that the Pooter School District District Performance Framework is traveling very, very consistently at about 66, 67%. And the most recent year, which was last year, 2022, that we got a, uh, performance framework, I want to remind you, it was called a transitional performance framework. And the reason the state did that is to signal to us that the data was thin and not as robust as it is in typical years. It's kind of like a cautionary note, right? Furthermore, I want to point out that the one dip that we see in that most recent year of 2022, that 2022 SPF, SPF, sorry, or DPF is actually reflecting 21, 22, um, achievement and growth data. And it's actually including for the post-secondary workforce readiness measures, the class of 2021. And that's where the dip came from, uh, which is only 2.2 percentage points, but it's coming from that PWR, post-secondary workforce readiness section of the framework. We were accredited. And that dip will pop right back up as we come out of that transitional framework and we get the more recent data. Graduation rates are in there and other things. And as you know, we had the highest graduation rates we've had in many, many, many years last year. That data is not included in that picture, but it will be on the next one. Couple important changes. We just wanted to take the opportunity tonight because we know that the board is going to see, um, school performance frameworks as well as the district performance framework when they arrive. And there's some changes that we're back on, they're not transitional. And a, a couple, there's six changes I want to just highlight real quick. For several years, there had been a, uh, an aspect to this where you could get a decrease of one plan type if you fell below 95% participation rates. They had done away with that during these transition years and on these years, at a couple of years where they paused the, the accountability frameworks and just held over ratings. At any rate, when we get these 2023 frameworks, that rule is back on. So you can drop a plan type if you have less than 95% attendance. It is what they call the accountability attendance rate, which does not include in the numerator or the denominator, parent refusals, right? Where they took their kids out of testing. The second thing, and that's interesting, all the, the numbers went from 1, 1, 1, 1 down to two. I just, sometimes Google does weird things. So that's really 1 through 6, um, in my world, okay? The second one is that they're no longer put the participation descriptor on these SPS and DPS. Growth, as I mentioned, is available for the first time, grades four through 11, because that skip grade um, piece we done on the assessment system, we're past that. They are going back to finally, they have single-year and multi-year performance frameworks. Um, if you remember, they used to do a three-year framework and a one-year framework, and they gave you the better of the two. They had to move away from that through these COVID disruption years. Well, they're back on, but the multi-year is a two-year. Um, they are changing one of the key, um, categories for, that we're reporting student outcomes in to multi, uh, multilingual learners rather than English language learners. And when you see that on the frameworks, multi-language learners will include all of those categories of like limited English proficient, fluid English proficient, um, and so on, not English proficient, all the way up to exit year one and exit year two. So it's all of those different categories. And that, there's going to be a new piece of information called exceed it to six-year clock, specifically for multilingual learners. It'll be a new, uh, uh, measure that we will see. And it will be on the part that they're also bringing back for informational purposes called on track. And I don't know if you all remember that on-track growth, as opposed to median growth percentiles, those are back coming on. There are more changes, but I'm not going through the list. I've spent too much time probably on, on it already. The point is that changes are here. We're getting back to the full-blown accountability system. And the point of this next slide is, is it takes a look through the next couple of years past 2023, we're going to see yet more changes are coming our direction. What I want to mention as the Chief Institutional Effectiveness Officer and somebody who's been paying attention to this accountability metrics, as well as our, all our local metrics, and then the whole improvement process that we use in PSD, all of this stuff rolled up, um, really just means that we are going to continue to see changes in the, in the accountability landscape. But Pooter School District's deep analysis that we do every year, where we land on these three-party performance challenges, we're going to talk about for the rest of the evening in this presentation, will be reflected in all, across all these different changes in the state accountability system. It's not going to throw us in a different direction, um, from what we have planned in our UIP and our strategic plan. And that's probably the bottom line message I want to share with you. And I'm going to pass over the mic to Tracy to take us into literacy.
Thank you, Dr. Schmitz. Dr. Tracy Guile, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. It is my pleasure to be the cabinet sponsor and honored to speak to the work of the literacy team. They've been working, um, throughout last school year to identify the different strategies that would help close the gap in performance that Dr. Schmitz talked about from our monitoring report between our current state and our desired state. And so we have some key strategies that we want to walk through tonight. So in just a brief highlight and overview of the district monitoring report in terms of what we were seeing for our current state going to desired state. So this slide shows two data points, one of which is Arcadians reading, which our students in kindergarten through third grade have been taking for several years. And the other data point is our MAP reading, which is NWEA, which is a nationally normed assessment that students in grades second through eighth grade have been taking. So the first data that is in the upper left corner is Arcadians reading. And that's spring achievement effect size. So you'll see on the X-axis, we have the years, um, dating back to 2016, 17. And then the, on the far right of that graph is 22, 23 data point. And then on that Y-axis is the spring achievement effect size. So in short, that effect size is a metric that we use to be able to compare different assessments and be able to, to take that information and interpret them um, across different tests to see what the story is that we're seeing in our trend data. So this particular Arcadians reading, that spring achievement effect size is showing that we have a three-year decline, a trend. So we always look for that three-year trend that started pre-pandemic and then, um, certainly had a significant drop in that 2020, 21 year. That Arcadians reading is measuring early literacy skills, those foundational skills that are critical to, um, future reading and comprehension. And so that, um, led us to examine that this could potentially be a really important priority performance challenge for us to investigate and to explore some really key high-leverage strategies to address. So Arcadians reading is shown, um, in the, that upper left and then going across to the right, that percent of at and above grade level expectations, the spring end of year. So you see a percentage of 79.2% that 2016, 17 year. And then 22, 23. We've had three years trending upwards since 2020, 21, um, with last year being 72.2%. Comparing to our PSD target and national norms, the story is still showing that PSD students are performing above national norms, but we do have a higher benchmark that we've set as our PSD target of a 0.25 effect size and also an 85% at grade level and above. Our target, while it's at grade level proficiency that we have as the title of that particular data slide, our real and true outcome with literacy is we want students to be able to access high levels of text and complex text and texts that they can have rich discussions about and texts that open their worldview. So while this is a measure that's really important to see if students are on grade level and on track for that level of proficiency, the other really important outcome is their ability to engage with high levels of text. And so you'll see as we get into the strategies that one of those really important strategies is this text at the center. And being able to work with a text that challenges their thinking and challenges their assumptions and that they can read and respond to. So also on this slide, in the lower left corner is the MAP reading. It tells a very similar story about why we chose literacy as a key, um, performance priority challenge. You'll see that declining trend line with a little bit of an increase in the last year on our MAP reading. Both of these confirm for us in our monitoring report that this is an area that we need to pay attention to and why it's being prioritized in both our strategic plan and in our UIP. So in literacy, the UIP priority performance challenges. So as I talked about, the metrics are in the monitoring report. So we are looking at both that early literacy foundational skills as a gap that we're addressing. We're also looking at the NWEA. But also the big part of that first bullet of reading proficiency levels is again, engaging with complex texts and having the ability to do so at a high level. The second bullet being that our gains are evident post-pandemic across all of our grade levels, yet pre-pandemic literacy levels have not been fully realized. So we want to regain some of that ground we had pre-pandemic. And then the third bullet talks about, we really do have persistent gaps amongst student populations. So our historically marginalized student groups meet grade level proficiency expectations at lower rates than other groups in PSD, both pre-pandemic and currently. And our strategies really are working to address that. So our theory of action, what we are working toward through the literacy plan is that if all students consistently implement high-quality materials, systems, and pedagogy, then every student will have the foundation on critical literacy skills needed for success. then every student will have the foundation on critical literacy skills needed for success. And then that strategic plan, major improvement strategy for year one, is we're really focusing and provisioning that high-quality, standards-based materials that are representative of multiple cultures and identities. So the literacy year one projects with, I'm the proud sponsor of the team along with Dr. Julie Chaplin. We have several team leads who are championing the work in different areas. And some of them are represented here tonight and appreciate all of their work getting us to this point. There are four key projects that we will elevate and execute on during this school year. The first one being adopting ninth and 10th grade English language arts materials with that recommendation coming to the Board of Education. On or around January 24th is the date we're looking at. The second bullet being that we want to have really strong curriculum implementation of three programs across our pre-K through five system with creative curriculum, Amplify CKLA for our core knowledge schools, and EL education at our K-5 schools. I also want to mention that our dual-language schools will continue to have professional development tied to their wonders and maravies, which is specific to our dual-language programs. The third bullet being that we want to focus specifically on the materials that we want to de-implement that are not aligned to the evidence-based reading instruction. All of our staff have had a really robust training and professional development that has allowed us to see different materials and different approaches and what is truly based in evidence. And so we want to look at the materials that we have had in our literacy curriculum and remove the ones that are not really going to produce the results and close the gaps that we recognize that we need to. And then finally, based on feedback from the board and other stakeholders at our last meeting, we did add that fourth project to really address the task aspect within literacy. So not only do we want our students to engage with a really strong, complex text, we also want to give them an authentic task with writing at the center of it to engage in. And so that feedback that we received at the last meeting, we did add that particular project with a teaming protocol. So we're going to combine a teaming protocol to look at designing tasks that are really strong, starting with our middle school teams. And with that, I'm going to move this off to Liz Davis, who's going to talk about mental health and belonging.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? So Liz Davis, I usually hear pronouns, and I'm the Senior Executive Director of Student Services and grateful to be here today, supporting mental health and belonging. So I always do this the wrong way. Okay. Yes. Oh, I have to push hard. Okay. So this slide demonstrates survey data from our youth last year, correct, Dwayne? Yes. And it is in table format with mental health concerns listed on the left and rows containing our N-count, total percentage, female, male, and queer, non-binary students on the top. Some of our students, some of our groups of students, in particular, are students identifying as LGBTQIA+ self-report elevated mental health risk factors such as self-harm, suicidality, and signs of depression, especially in females and queer, non-binary students. We're concerned about this data. We're really concerned about our high numbers and grateful that we have a strategy for mental health and in the UIP around mental health and belonging. So our UIP performance challenge, we've really come to understand some of the challenge based on the global pandemic caused by stress in our homes and school environments. And our youth need a ton of support. And we've seen that in the years, and we've all seen that. Our students who are historically marginalized self-report not feeling as connected to their peers, staff, or interests and passions at school when compared to the overall PSD student population. And some of our groups, some of our groups of students identifying as LGBTQIA+ again, self-report that elevated mental health risk factor rates. Our strategic plan, our theory of action states, if we increase access to mental health supports for staff and students, then we will create a learning environment that fosters inclusivity, connectedness, and wellbeing, which will increase student engagement and improve academic outcomes. And then we see our strategic plan, major improvement strategy for year one, it's really about increasing student access to mental health providers and opportunities for those meaningful connections. But when we think about that, we think about that not only internally in our district, but working in collaboration with, very closely with our community partners. And we're excited about that to come. Oops. You got to push hard. Okay. I don't have that down. Thanks for bearing with me. So excited to engage in some of this work with sponsors, with Madeline Knoblet and Dr. Insoon Olsen. So thanks so much. And amazing team leads. And we have a group of projects that'll walk us through a little bit. And the first one, you know, when we think about our schools, we think about not adding lots of new stuff. Our schools are doing lots of amazing things. And one of the things that they're all doing is they're all having multi-tiered system of supports. All of our schools are having teams that meet. But we really wanted to see that specialized focus on social, emotional, and behavior support aligned with our data and really a focused area around that. We're excited about that project. And really working on some consistent guidance in that space connected to some processes and protocols. And you've all heard this about hiring and training and working with CSU and having interns to fellows. We're excited about that. And increasing our mental health staff and trainees to not only work on our processes and systems, but to really support some of the staffing to increase connectedness with our students. We're excited about that. And we have a cohort of 10, starting from CSU School of Social Work soon, next week. We will also refine and continue implementing a comprehensive community partnership strategy specific to mental health and belonging. We're working hard on, we're working really hard on engaging our community partners and excited to work together because we can't do this alone, and we know that. And we will continue refining and implementing a comprehensive community, oh, partnership strategy. I talked about that. The next one, promoting awareness of PSD and community mental health resources through the multilingual communications project driven by student input. And that's the work of Madeline and her team. And the next one is a project around bullying prevention and education. And really having a team being intentional about looking at our policies and looking at our frameworks here in the district, here in the state, and trends nationally, and making sure that we're aligned with best practices and looking at our data. So we look forward to engaging in a project around that as well. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. I'm Dr. Julie Chaplin, Assistant Superintendent. And I'm really excited to talk about one of my passions, which is graduate with options. Coming from all my entire career in secondary, I feel a real strong connection to this work. I'm excited to be a cabinet sponsor to support it along the way. So as we think about this strategic priority and how we determined to land here, you know, this kind of goes back to some of the data that Dwayne really helped, oh, help, there we go, helped us really kind of elaborate in terms of how do we look, how do we look compared to our districts that are similar in demographics and in size? And when we look at the table up here, the two tables on the left really indicate line graphs around SAT scores. So you can see Pooter School, or Pooter School District is in black. And that indicates that amongst all of our districts, we are second from the top in how we score, which is our achievement. So we have really high achieving outcomes for our students on the SAT. When you then start looking at the far table on the right, again, Pooter School District is in black. We are at the bottom. Of course, we're above the state in terms of our graduation rates, but we are still lagging behind all of our comparable districts, which for us then calls into play this need for a strategic priority and how we shore up and how our graduation rate really becomes more representative of our student performance and what we see happening in our schools and we see as our students in terms of what they know and what they can demonstrate. So I'm very, you know, as we think about the priority performance challenges, really in a nutshell, it really talks about, you know, we're not commensurate, just as I had just stated, in terms of levels of college and career readiness. And we have historically marginalized student groups who have not been graduating at the same rate as our other groups throughout PSD. And so, and they also don't have the same graduation rates as their like peer, like group peers throughout the state as well. So our strategic plan, our theory of action, we fully believe that if we expand options to meet those graduation requirements and we implement some equitable grading practices in our system, we focus on decreasing absenteeism among students, then we're going to help prepare them better for their future opportunities. And so in year one, our strategic plan really focuses on updating high school graduation requirements to support multiple pathways, multiple, I want to stress that, to ensure that students are supported and they're attaining all of the things that they need not only to graduate, but to follow their intended pathways after they leave Pooter School District. And so I'm thrilled to be the cabinet sponsor along with Dr. Dwayne Schmitz and Dr. Insoon Olsen. We have amazing team leads, a few of them are in the house tonight. That, and we'll continue to add some more as we focus in on the middle school. So by around September 15th, we'll have a few more leads as we address truancy absenteeism work and middle school. But really, the three main bullet points of our projects are looking at those high school graduation requirements to support multiple pathways, including two-year college, four-year college, military career. And then how we also adjust and allow for students to earn standard diplomas even though they may have an individual education program, or they might be a diverse learner. And so we've got some, we've got some, you know, wording and policies that we can restructure to make all of that happen. The one piece that I really want to stress as we're looking at graduation requirements is that this again is how do we provide more pathways and more opportunities for students to take classes that they want to take, that aligns with their interests, their passions, exploration, and future ideas of what they want and who they want to be. This is not trying to manipulate, you know, credits in a way to boost rates. That is not the intent here. I fully do believe that when students are engaged and they're able to work and complete coursework in their passions, we're going to see that. That is not the goal. We need to really articulate about different pathways that students can take. What does it look like to get an AA in our high schools? What's the pathway to the ascent program? Because it's not very clear to all of our families. How do we begin to map a four-year college pathway, a two-year, a military enlistment? And then multiple pathways of all of the avenues that you can do for career. We have designated CTE pathways. And so how do we develop those, make those so that students and families can understand them and tap into work-based experiences, internships, apprenticeships, gaining industry certifications? There are so many nuances into graduating and being prepared. And right now, our current system really isn't allowing students to tap in where they need to. So you can tell I'm a little excited about that work. The second project, of course, is looking at middle schools. And we're starting at middle schools, but this will be all secondary. It's just going to take a while to develop not only the common understanding of equitable grading practices, first with our principal group, and what do we, what is our common understanding? And then what do we agree upon as standard equitable practices? And how do we build that? That's our focus this year, is fostering that leadership development with our middle school principals in the hopes that next year, not in the hopes, they will next year, then implement those same sorts of engagement processes with their staff. And next year, we would reiterate this process with high school, which would iterate the following years. And then the final, very important work that's, that has been in progress with Liz Davis and her team and James DePilato and a number of other members in our district is looking at our truancy processes and how we implement system-wide strategies to address chronic absenteeism and truancy. They are not the same thing, and they do require different strategies. And so we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of committees and community engagement, parent partnership engagement to review truancy handbooks, come up with recommendations, and then even potential future ideas of how we develop even more hands-on supports for schools, families, and kids. So with that, I think this goes to Ms. Madeline.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Chaplin. My name is Madeline Knoblet. I am the Chief Information Officer here in PSD. And this evening, I'll talk with you about how it is that we will communicate the PSD strategic plan now that you have gotten to take a tour of it. We want to make sure that our community, our students, our staff, our parents and guardians, our community partners, all have opportunities, not just in the days to come, but in the weeks, months, and years, to be able to really understand the plan and be able to see themselves in it. Because it's only then when we have awareness of it across our system that we can build alignment and ownership into that plan and be able to really see how it can affect students and what their experiences are in the classrooms every day. So as far as a launch for communications, we provided an update as this team at our administrators kickoff in July, being able to help bring everybody along with the work that has occurred, the simplification, going, you know, deep on some of these, the few different focus areas that we have, as well as help provide understanding of where folks would be able to provide input and help inform the work moving forward. From there, we had the strategic plan launch video that was played earlier in the presentation play as well at the August 10 and 11 District-wide Professional Learning Days as a moment to be able to, again, build awareness and hopefully some excitement around launch of the plan. I will pull up here in just a moment, a strategic plan sub-site that we've had a number of folks working on. That will be the home for all information about the plan, not just today, but as we move forward. And then we'll package all of this up. The sub-site link, which is a strategic, PSD strategic planet, or excuse me, strategicplan.pstschools.org. We'll package that up along with the hype video and really our why, why it is that we are doing this Plan Y now and how do we all work together around it. That'll go out tomorrow to all staff and our community. So parents as well as key community partners and secondary students. And then our team has been working on building out a protocol to be able to partner with district leaders to, again, increase awareness of what our steps are moving forward with year one and how the work will move forward in our system. And again, where all of our colleagues, regardless of position, can hopefully see themselves and figure out where it is that they can bring our priorities to life. And then what we would propose is bringing updates to you all, to our board, twice annually. And that allows our teams time to do the deep work, make sure that we are building alignment, that we are taking the time we need to bring people along and to get feedback so that this work can happen with fidelity across our system. And then be able to, in a consistent way, across all of these action teams, be able to share how it is that we're doing on the plan, what's working, what's not working. And be able to then, after presenting to you all, reflect that same information out to our community, primarily on the strategic plan sub-site that we will tour briefly here in a moment. And then through various strategic communications plans to support each of the teams, recognizing that there will be important milestones and things that we teams, recognizing that there will be important milestones and things that we need help from folks across the system to implement as we go. All right. So this is just a, an image on the screen here of a student with their arms raised above their heads. It's one of the students in a elementary school here in Pooter School District. And it, when we click on it here, will take us to that strategic plan sub-site. Sub-site's just a fancy word for a separate website that everyone will be able to get to from PSDschools.org. So starting tomorrow, we will have all sorts of easy ways for folks to get to this site. But what you see here, along the top, Pooter School District Strategic Plan, and then there is a blue navigation bar just below with our district priority areas of literacy, mental health, and belonging, and graduate with options. When users navigate to each of those, it will take them to a sub-page that highlights the information that my colleagues have shared this evening around why is it that we're focused on each of these three performance indicators? What is it that we hope to accomplish as we move forward in this work? Who is working on this? Not the specific staff members' names per se, but giving our community a sense of the true collaboration that's happening across our system, represented in different departments and school-based leaders and, and community partners. And then over time, again, thinking through the twice annual updates, being able to reflect data that we collect and monitor so that our, again, collective community can see the progress that we are making across each of these areas. All right. So our next steps, as we have talked about before in the space, but want to bring us back, is right now, in fall, we've walked through, of course, the year one project implementation. From here, we have action teams that will be identifying year two projects. So teams came together just recently to be able to work together, understand the charge ahead, be able to figure out how it is that they're going to be working best as teams to do this work, and then building out those year two project plans. And then as we come back in spring, to be able to provide you all an update, we want to give progress reports on each of those year one projects, and then how it is that we're going to refine and move through the year two projects. And then at that point, we will be able to add information to the sub-site around those year two projects and start the planning process for year three. And again, all of this, we imagine the cadence being that we'd come here, get feedback from you all as our directors, be able to integrate that with feedback from our teams and all of those various action team feedback loops, and then share the information out across that strategic plan sub-site. All right. With that, we will go ahead and pause, and then any questions, discussion you'd like to have, we're happy to entertain that.
Looks like Nate has something.
Will there be fireworks?
Looks like Nate doesn't have anything. Sorry, go ahead.
Good question. I wish there were. I've not yet gotten approval from the fire department. I will add it to the plan.
DJ, you had something.
And I think you're kind of getting to it on the website when you were showing it, but one of the things that I, I felt kind of missing a little bit in there, and you talk about, you know, seeing yourself in the work. And so I kind of wonder if there's a way that we have an op, if we have an opportunity to share in our newsletters or in communications of, like, what you might see or how you will see the work. And I'm not smart enough to come up with great ideas on that necessarily, but it, it's just so that, one, we're talking about it regularly, and two, we'll understand that, like literacy, you're going to see new books on, on there, you're going to be seeing new books or a new way that we talk about this. I just wonder if there's a way that we could work something like that in there so that, again, we're, we're coming, we're talking about it twice a year or whatever, but we want everybody really talking about it all the time. And so I, that's just something that jumped out to me, and then I felt a little better when I saw the actual website versus what I was reading before, but I think there's an opportunity to share that.
Yeah. Great question or idea, Director Anderson. As our team worked over the summer, not just on the sub-site, and huge shout out to our friends in IT as well and helping us pull that all together. What we have built out in our communications strategic plan for the year are, I hope, what will address your idea. And that is not just being able to provide the community with those concrete updates around our progress on the plan, but really, as you said, where are we seeing it in our system? And so we have, I don't remember the number of stories that we identified that we want to tell as a team, but being able to go deeper, do more kind of feature work. And so some of the ones that we have on our list are around what, what does the elementary literacy adoption really look like for students? And we don't know yet exactly how the angle will play out, but being able to show, not just tell, what the experience of one of our elementary kiddos and our elementary educator friends, what that is actually looking like in practice and how it is different from past experiences with our literacy curriculum. So that's one example. Matt and Philip, our talented video team, are working on a series that they want to center upon each of our district priorities. And we recognize some of the episodes may in fact bring together all three of the priorities in one. So they did a series years ago around, it was called the Student Experience. And again, the idea was really to show, not tell, the beautiful intentional experiences that our students have every day. And so they'll be working through a video series with between four and maybe six of those this year. We also have stories lined up to be able to more deeply feature and really show the people behind the fellowship program on the mental health side of things. So to be able to talk to several of the fellows and be able to understand who they are as humans and what motivated them on the journey that they are on to be able to serve our students. And then tied to that, what the experience is like for our students to be able to see them and interact with them in our system and for our colleagues to have the additional support in the system. So our plan is to launch, this is really the starting place, and then to be able to, we have as a team, said we have aligned our work entirely around the priorities so that in time, we should be able to build out content on that sub-site across our entire site that is in constant alignment with the work that is happening day by day by day. So I hope that helps address.
Other comments or questions? DJ apparently has another.
I have another. Yeah, on the literacy one, could you explain to us and the community why when we're looking at, we're looking at ninth and 10th grade, what about 11th and 12th grade? Just address that part.
So I will do my best to address that particular question. So ninth and 10th grade are two of those core courses at, at high school, of course, where, that the critical aspect of all kids are going into those two courses. It's probably our best opportunity to leverage an adoption of some very targeted materials that has a systemic impact across, across the district. Whereas once students start to go into those 11th and 12th grade, they tend to be, you know, very selective types of courses that a district-wide adoption wouldn't necessarily best serve as many students, as much as it would be at that ninth and 10th grade level. And let Julie Chaplin add on as a more experienced secondary.
Yeah, sure. I can definitely add on a little bit to that. Yeah, that's, that's, you're, you're right on with that. When we get to 11th and 12th grade, not only are there more course offerings in language arts, but we're also, you know, looking at concurrent enrollment, so we're not using district, you know, curriculum, we're aligning with those community college partners or, and so the really, the stratification of that really becomes quite, quite intense, I guess. And ninth and 10th grade also hasn't had an adoption for, gosh, I, I don't even think that I've seen one. Yeah. So, yeah, so 20 years and I've never seen one. So it's really, really, really needing to do that. But yeah, ninth and 10th are really the core of where you get students in, focusing, helping get to SAT level.
You're struggling today with me. I don't know.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to share some of the things that, that I heard as you all going around the room here. One of the things is, I just love the way that this has been set up and divided. You can see the overlap in everything, but you also see that there's definite ownership. And that, I just want to thank you all for the strong teams. Thank you all in the back there for being willing to be on these teams. This is, it's, other words I wrote down, excitement. I think maybe Julie, you won the excitement one? I don't know. I think that was while you were talking, I wrote that down. The other, the other thing that's just struck me was that this, this is the way to eat the elephant, right? One bite at a time. And that's what we're doing is this year, it's that one bite, and then next year it's going to be the next bite, and the year after that. Liz, as you were talking, I looked over here and I saw the three beautiful posters that we have. I also noticed them up at the welcoming center in the mall. They were on the back of the bathroom stall. So for those who can't see those posters, they're designed for students with a QR code that basically says, I think it's, is it Ask, Listen, Connect?
Yes.
And it's, there's a Spanish and English and a Arabic version of that with a QR code on it so that they can connect with any mental health services that they may need. And they're attractive and fun and just beautiful. You are taking, you all are taking something that is extremely complex and you have made it easy to understand, digestible. And I think that's going to be super important for our community. They're going to need that in those bite-sized pieces, digestible pieces. Madeline, your discussion around, you're talking about storytelling around our priorities. And that is an amazing way to get out what, what we're, what we're doing here, that storytelling. And then just, what we're doing is we're just getting the most out of those changes. When you're talking about doing ninth and 10th grade, that you're, you're hitting the majority of the students or in a sense, all of the students instead of saying, well, we could piecemeal here and there. Let's focus on the students that we can get the biggest bang for the buck kind of thing. So I'm just, like, I'm excited by this. This is really, it's just extremely well done, well put together. It's energized me. And thank you. Just thank you. I know the tremendous amount of work that went into this. I know that probably divvying these up into the pieces that they, and, and who is leading and who's on the team and all of that, I'm sure that took quite the effort. And looks fantastic. So thank you.
Jim?
Just building on what Kristen said, I love the ownership, I love the commitment, I love the focus. One of the things I love about this whole thing is when someone comes to me and says, "Jim, how's it going on the school board?" I'm actually able to come back and say, "Actually, we're focused on three priorities: literacy, mental health, and belonging, and graduate with options," and then start talking about those. And it's just so fun to be able to do that. And when I'm done, usually people are like, "Wow." You know, it's much more than what they expected. So I sure appreciate all the work behind that to make that work. Thank you.
Other comments? Oops, getting loud again. Looks like not, right? Okay. Really appreciate the presentation and the engagement with the board around the strategic plan and the underlying Unified Improvement Plan, which we're going to talk about and vote on in a second. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. So our next item here is in fact, the adoption of the Unified Improvement Plan for 2324. Can I get a motion with respect to that plan? Nate?
I move that the board approve the 2023 to 2024 Unified Improvement Plan for the Pooter School District as presented.
Excellent. Can I get a second? Looks like Jess gave us a second there. All right. I'm assuming that there's not additional presentation on this. Is that correct or is there? Okay. So are there any other comments or questions on the Unified Improvement Plan as perhaps distinct from the presentation we got on the strategic plan? Yeah, me too, but you can go first. Fred? Is it Fred?
Fred?
That's right.
Finally, finally gets it right.
Go ahead, Kristen.
It's only been six years. The one question that I have, and I, I think it was answered via email, but I just wanted to sort of put it out there for the general public too, is, so if we could have better, an explanation of, in the UIP, we talk about complex tasks centered on complex text. And the other one was the, oh my gosh, no, I'm going to forget what it was. Let me see if I can pull it up here. Text Task and Thinking Instructional Shifts. If we can just have some explanation as to what that might look like, what the teacher's doing, what the students are doing, what, what families can expect at home. And I know, like, you did a really nice job of laying that out in the answer in the email, but just, I don't know if that's something that we can put onto the website for the UIP. I, there's, I feel like that needs to get out there because when you look at complex text centered on, complex tasks centered on complex text, it sounds great, it's hard to say, but it doesn't necessarily tell me what it means. And then the, the Text Task and Thinking Instructional Shifts doesn't necessarily tell me what it is either. So if we can just have a less edgy speak, explanation of it would be awesome.
Do you want that in the room or, and on the site or both?
Yeah, I was going to ask, you don't mean in this moment here, you mean as part of our materials as we move this forward.
Exactly. No, no, I, because I, no, because it's been beautifully explained in the email and it's, you know, it's like five paragraphs. So I don't, I don't need that in the room. I just want to go ahead and have that front-facing, public-facing, so that people understand what it is that we're talking about when we say that.
Thanks, Kristen.
Yep.
Other comments or questions? DJ?
Okay. So I'm trying to find where, with, with our new app, it tells me it's on page 27 that I made this note, but it is, it is in reference to handoffs and with like mental health and partnerships in there, I believe. But my question was, are there any road, roadblocks for the smooth handoff between agencies that we as a board should be working on with either legislation or community outreach? And, and this is really just kind of a, I'm setting you up so that when those come up, I'm not expecting this, so you have them right now, but i- if those are roadblocks to that, please keep us in mind and figure out how we can try to overcome those so that, that we're able to address these, these kids' needs. And I think we've got a lot of great organizations in our community that step up in the summer and that we also work with. And I, some of the feedback I've heard is sometimes it's hard to know what's been done because of, because of privacy, and which all means we need to do, but if there's ways that we can help foster that, please let us know. And let's make sure that we're thinking outside the box on ways that we can help, help make that a better, better job. Thanks.
Other comment, other comments or questions from the board? All right, I have a couple of things. One of them is that as it relates to particularly the community partnerships and the absenteeism and truancy, I, I appreciate, well, I had identified that I had some concerns about the level of specificity of the plans associated with those two items in the Unified Improvement Plan. I appreciate the district getting back to the board and indicating that we'll have further updates after, let's say, mid-September on both of those things because they're both real important things. They're things that the board has had some focus on for some time, and I think we'd be real interested to understand more about the specifics there. The other thing I would just mention, and it's sort of in the same camp, is the whole question of bullying. I know, I certainly feel strongly that that's a thing that needs to be addressed. I appreciate the fact that we're going to have a focus on that as one of the items in the mental health arena. You had mentioned, Liz, about examining policy, and that's certainly an important thing to do. I think it's also important, in the same way that we looked at discipline stuff, that we need to ensure that there's consistency of expectations and expectations. we need to ensure that there's consistency of expectations and execution around how we handle bullying incidents in our schools across the district, because I suspect that's not the case now. So I'll look forward, either as a member of the board, if it comes to us before November, or as a member of the public after that, I'll be following that with some interest personally, and I suspect other members of the board will do so as well. Other comments or questions? Getting close to the end here. I don't know, never mind. So what, so what? Do we have something? Brian, did you have something else you want? No, no, you're just looking at the clock too. Jill, would you call a vote on this motion, please?
DJ Anderson?
Aye.
Jim Brokich?
Aye.
Nate Donovan?
Aye.
Kristen Draper?
Aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Aye.
Carolyn Reed?
Aye.
Jessica Zamora?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven-zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yes, so this concludes the business of the Pooter School District Board of Education at our meeting today. It is still August 22nd, and it is approximately 9:13 PM, and I am now adjourning this meeting.